It's just the connection, I think, so.
So it's not the same as the, um...
Oh, it's not the same as like, we sorted that, we didn't touch wood.
All right then, so, um, welcome Fabrizio.
Thank you, hi.
Well, I think we'll make a start.
Let me just get somebody in the meeting in who I'm inviting in the public, so. I'm just gonna enter, let them in, both, a second.
Can you all hear something around, um, Terry, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, uh, it's very clear now, that's good. Ben said right now, it is very clear, good. I'll be joining with on the other phone because I'm family, so.
Well, I think that's Keith as well, welcome Keith.
Hello, you all right?
All right, yes, thank you.
Good, hello all, yeah, not too bad?
Good.
Hello, Tom.
Hello. Hello Keith.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello Ed.
Hello.
And thanks for today, you saw the response.
Yeah, it, it, it really bad. Every time I go to the post office, obviously there's a little bit of rubbish. And I pick up one or two items because there's bins either side as that pathway zigzag through. But today, it really was noticeable, there was just a field of plastic across the green.
Right, and it's just that bit between the Bronford flats?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, I mean, it's clearly down to them there, you know, I mean, but it's one for Bronford to take up with their residents, really.
Well, I have to say that, that, one of the, sorry, we digress quickly. One of the piles is obviously from somebody having decorations done because it is just 10 to 15 paint pots, and, um...
Do you mind if we, sorry to interrupt you, but we're gonna try and get on if you don't mind.
Sorry.
Okay, lovely, all right, well, welcome everybody. Um, the emergency evacuation procedure, I think it room is, is all, is well known. Um, I think we're filming, are we? Are we filming?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, filming. Um, and number, point number one is submissions from the public. And I think you said, um, Sharon, that there is a member of the public joining us.
Or it, yeah.
Okay, so, the floor is yours.
I'm assuming then that they're just observing the meeting rather than trying, they think...
Oh, oh, right, sorry, I should...
Sharon, can I hear?
Yes, I can hear you, Tom, go ahead.
Thank you, I just wanted to update you again that the, the next community engagement forum meeting is on the 9th of March, um, so invite Tuesday, so invite everyone, all the councillors and the community members to attend. So, no, there was an update, so I just wanted to correct it, okay?
Okay, lovely, thank you very much, Tom. Um, so point two is to receive any apologies for absence.
Yes, I have apologies from councillor Michael Hill.
Okay, lovely, thank you. Um, three declarations by members under the Local Government Act 1972. I'll take it there's none? Okay, uh, point four, announcements by the chair, I don't have any announcements to make. Uh, point five, to confirm the minutes of the meeting of the 23rd of December 2020 as a correct record.
Yep, look for that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, lovely, thank you. Um, what do we do, Sharon, in this case, because, um...
Keith proposed, Tom seconded, can you take a vote on that, please?
Angela?
Your numbers, thank you. Um, you could ask the Chair of Council to sign on your behalf.
Um, the Chair of Council?
Yes, Tony, he's here.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't even say hello to him. I'm so sorry, Tony, I didn't even know that you were here. I'm really... Well, I, I will plead with you then, do you mind signing on my behalf? Thanks.
This is the second place this time.
Yeah, the last time as well, actually, wasn't it? Sorry about this.
Twenty seven.
We have you very much.
Okay, yes, thank you, Tony, for that. Um, point six, to consider any matters arising from the minutes of the meeting on 23rd of December, not covered elsewhere on the agenda. Six point one, pinch point on shared Brookway pedestrian slash cycleway SGC local transport priority list link to COVID-19 social distancing.
Um, shall I give you the, um, I chased staff last...
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Last week, uh, about the meeting that they said that they'd arrange and they said, um, with the current state of play and the current government message, planning a site meeting at this time would not be wise. As you may be aware, there will be announcement by the government on the 15th of February, so we should wait till then and hopefully be given a clearer message on how things will be going forward in the short term and if current restrictions will be relaxed or not.
Yeah, I think that's a very pragmatic way of looking at things, isn't it? So, okay, thank you for that, Sharon. Um, six point two, South Glastonbury Council tree planting in Bradley Stoke. I've seen you sent an update on that one.
Well, again, I chased them last week to see if they could give us an update with regards to planting in Bradley Stoke, because we haven't heard anything regarding the final locations. Um, I haven't heard anything back from them yet. Um, I have observed the fact that there are a number of trees that have been planted on the highway verge on Brookway by a patchway, Brook Roundabout. I don't know whether that's linked to this tree planting project or whether it's because they were looking at replacing some of the trees when they cut the ash tree down on the junction of Oak Tree and Brookway. So, I haven't heard that from them yet.
Is there anything, Keith, is there anything that we need to do about that, then? As, as Sharon said, she's observed those, that, that happening, do we need to do anything?
Well, I mean, you, you could contact Leah Bendin in South Gloss. She's on the Arborist team, she's moved slightly. I think she's, she's actually dealing with all the, um, applications now, so it may well be something that's on their radar. Uh, there is a fair bit of tree work going on around the whole of South Gloss at the moment. Uh, I noticed in, quite in the Littlestoke Park, there's trees that have been cut back, uh, the debris has been left on the ground. Obviously, there's the inevitable gypsy patch, which Sharon knows about, uh, which is all those healthy, living, undiseased trees which they're taking down this week, um, to allow for the gypsy patch widening, but, um, I gather there's some, some extra work there that needs to be done, but that'll come out probably in our update later. Um, I would just contact our Arborist team, Sharon, and speak to Leah Bendin and see what she can, uh, see what she can advise on this one.
Yeah, I will certainly do that, thanks Keith.
Bear in mind, we've just, um, taken up our own tree policy, so I would hope that they're not going to plant any of these trees too close to people's houses, which has always been the case in the past, because as we said last week, squirrels do climb trees. And they will get into those houses and cause havoc in their root spaces, if they can.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, all right, that's lovely, so that's an option, um, for, for Sharon to follow up, okay, lovely.
I've just got your hand up as well.
Chair? Um, if you notice to know that what they're doing around Oak Tree Crescent, whether or not that was to replace the 60-year-old ash that they took down on the corner?
Yeah, I'll ask.
Leah Bendin, sure, Tony.
Yeah, that's lovely, thank you.
I'll chase, uh, advise on us as well, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks Sharon and Tommy. Okay, so point seven, to note the outcome of the previous planning applications and other documents pertaining to planning and environment issues.
Um, you, so I did send through an updated version of it today, and there were six decisions, all of which agreed with us. Um, the one that we, that we objected to, the 14 Groynes Close erection of a one and a half storey dwelling without access and associated works, that was refused permission by South Gloss.
We've got something right then?
Nice.
Yeah, absolutely, okay. Um, point eight, to prepare responses to the proper authorities regarding planning applications relating to Bradley Stoke.
There, there is, you have the five that you had, and then I sent through another one which we will get to eventually, which is 33 Addams Close, so that's eight point six. So, eight point one is prior notification for the 20-metre monocole cabinet and works on Bradley Stoke Way, P21 00005, P A1. So, bear with me a minute, will you share my screen?
I think under the circumstances, we can't live without these poles because everybody wants their coverage, but unless there's anything drastic, I'll move it.
Yeah, I think you're right.
A few minutes, I've got it.
Like, did you roll out in that?
Yep.
Right, okay, so that is the location. And then I can show you what is there at the moment, so that, this is what is there at the moment. And this, that's what's proposed.
Because there's one of those a bit further at the rate, isn't there?
Two of them.
Yeah, there's one, Woodland, is it?
Woodland, whatever.
Literally just up through the river.
Well, just...
What I do?
Right.
That'd be different, maybe.
I'm not sure we've got much options here.
People need connectivity, don't they?
Really?
And they're all sharing anyway nowadays, so...
And at least it's in front of a, you know, um, commercial premises.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, I think it was Keith proposed that.
Yeah.
Tony seconded?
Yeah.
Can you take a vote on that, please, councillors?
My screen's gone, Sharon, hands up this, this end, anyway.
Yeah, that's you, anonymous one, thank you very much. Thank you, right there with me, second. Sort the next one out. Right, the next one is P21 00043M, erection of single-storey rear and side extension to form additional living accommodation at 49 Rosemary Close. Right, so on the picture, it is... This house on the end here. So it's this house here, back that one there. So, I think, I'm in the... Side, isn't it, so, um...
Side of Drive.
Right, so that's what's there at the moment. And that's what's proposed. Going from that to that. Also, shall I show you the, um... This thing and proposed block plan, that's quite helpful. So, that's what's there at the moment, and that's what's proposed.
I think it's the other way around, isn't it?
No, that, this is, this is...
Just did.
Oh, sorry.
No, that... It says proposed at the bottom.
They've got that round the wrong way because...
Okay.
Yeah, that's what's there at the moment and they're, yeah, filling in, I think it's their wording that's round the wrong way on the bottom.
Yeah, that's right, actually, yeah.
Sharon, can you show, sorry?
No, go on, no, go on.
Can you show the side and drive elevation?
Yes, that, maybe.
Yeah, sure, proposal.
Existing side and drive elevation. And that's what's there at the moment. That's what's proposed.
Now, the drive, the one that you showed first, didn't that show a shared drive between the other house?
Yeah, I think it was shared, but it was very, very clearly demarked, demarked, wasn't it, so...
It's just...
Actually, that looks quite a lot bigger than the side bit on this plan, doesn't it?
This one, yeah, you said, we, uh...
Is that a carriage there, in the back, that bit, what you've got here?
Yeah, it's on the next doors, Tony, it's a shared drive, I thought it was, going in.
And they're gonna go, like, Harry.
That's it, exactly, it's gonna narrow, there, look, where that, where that car is, they're gonna be coming out on the side there.
There's still, yeah, but there is still space between...
Yeah, there's space, is there any comments from anybody on that one as yet, or when was it posted up on the site?
Since the apes have jammed, so it's been in the system a long time. The comment on there is from a neighbour supporting it.
Supporting it, right, okay.
Which, which side of the house, which, which number?
They don't tell you that, they just say, they don't give the address of whoever it is.
Could be the other neighbour, couldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, anybody.
Exactly.
Yeah. I mean, what, what do you think, everyone? I mean, i- if we could say, you know, subject to, uh, the space for the drives being sufficient?
Yeah, Ed's got his hand up.
Oh, sorry, I can't see Ed's hand up, when the, the screen's taken up. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was gonna take on the point that when, when you bracket something, um...
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to get away from...
The question is, is that what mandatory access has to be that gets behind there? So if you've said, that's an ambulance, or you said that's a fire engine, then of course you have to take in the width and height restrictions of that gap going through. Now, the other thing is, if someone has a caravan...
Yeah.
...that goes through the gap, because otherwise you are restricting, you know, certain vehicle access that you would have to, uh, um, put a notice of, you know, height six foot two, no vehicle wider than.
Yeah.
So, I'm not saying you can't have the planning, but what I'm saying is, if there is restriction, then there must be the appropriate notices in place.
Is that really the case?
Well, the problem you've got, the problem you've got is, it'll come back to their deeds or what caveats are in their deeds, but in planning terms, it's a civil matter, and that's what, you know, they won't get involved in it, but I'm looking at this from the point of view that they are narrowing the access to the garages, which I presume one could be theirs and could be their own side, if you like, but they're narrowing effectively all of that drive as it is now. And also, is there a side door accessing out onto that drive?
That's the front door, Keith. Where is that? The front doors on that side elevation, I think if there's a door as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Could you, could we just, could we just see what Andy's got to, Andy's got his hand up, so could we hear what Andy's got to say?
I was just looking at the plan that Sharon had up before, and if you look, where the front of the house narrows and the driveway comes over to the left-hand side, the actual space there is not significantly different than the space after the extension is built by the way of the driveway. If you, you go back to that one you were on before, Sharon, with the proposed and...
On the second up, Tony's just hand up, with someone.
Not that one, the, the block plan one?
No, it was, Tony, it was just, it's just...
Yeah, I, I think I know what you mean, Andy, actually.
Right, sorry, which one did you say, Andy, this one?
The what one, yeah, if you look, if you look at the space where the, uh, red boundary is with the new extension, and then you look at the corner of the front of the house, it's not actually that much different.
That bit there, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that gap is not actually that much different because the driveway kind comes across one side, doesn't it?
Yeah.
If you look at their boundary, which is effectively where your pointer was, where you've got a garage, um, by filling in that point, they're not gonna have any real access on their own drive coming into that garage, they're gonna have to access from a neighbour's side. You get my point?
The neighbour's side, that's their garage.
I would have thought, you know, there, there would have probably been an issue there, but it's all down to caveats and deeds and all the rest of it, but I'm surprised they haven't complained up to now, they may in the future, of course, but, um, I just look at that, the, the way that boundary comes in on their side...
And you're right, Keith.
Yeah, I agree absolutely, because it just means they will have to drive over the neighbour's drive to get it up and going.
And as Ed said, I mean, if ever they had a motorhome or caravan or whatever, I mean, there's not a lot of room there left on their own boundary side, even in front of their garage.
I think Ed had his hand up then.
Yeah, the other thing you must consider is that while the neighbours there are all friendly, and neighbour A is saying, I don't mind, you can come over, they sell the house, Ed X moves in and says, oh, no, no chance.
But then I suppose that that's Keith's point, yeah, isn't that Keith's point about being a civil matter, then?
It is civil, in planning terms, it is.
We, we, we have to make sure, as councillors, that we understand the aspects of that and nip it in the bud, as well. Here's, here's reasons for us to pause this, because what we don't want to do is be open to, well, you knew you're gonna drag me into a civil litigation, why didn't you make a suggestion at the beginning? And we know that. So we have the duty to say, hang on a minute, we're not experts, but we have enough experience overall to recognise where there is a, a potential issue for somebody, so let's pause, get it clarified, nip it goes ahead and everyone's happy, because those points have been overcome.
Yeah. So you look at the house next, looking at that house next to 53...
The what?
Neighbor, the, the neighbour property, if he was to do something similar, there wouldn't be a lot of drive left to drive through to get to garages, would there?
No.
Um, Ben's got his hand up in here, I don't know whether you can see that, Terry?
Uh, no, sorry about that, I can only see portion of the, I can only see four little tiles.
You can, you can scroll up and down on your, you should be able to, like, move between...
My, my thought's gonna be, um, as much as we're talking about access to the garage, which obviously by building on the side there, they're not really going to have anymore, and you could look at it through a different lens, because you could say, we have, and South Gloss have approved people essentially converting their garages, they're no, they're no longer vehicle parking areas or require vehicle access. So, very similar type of approach, he's got plenty, well, they've got plenty of parking outside the front on the front part of the property, which means they can't access the garage, which is probably too small anyway to fit a car in it or any decent-sized vehicle. Um, and we do, we do regularly check planning applications for people converting garages to other living purposes.
Yeah.
Principle is still kind of the same, it's just blocking off vehicle access to a garage. Um, and we don't have also that when it's been converted into a living accommodation.
Yeah.
But, but with the property, they would need at least one and a half parking spaces normally, of which the garage is one anyway, although in real terms, if garages are small, you could say they're barely big enough to take half a car anyway, it depends what type of car, of course. Um, but, you know, I mean, they aren't, they aren't, sorry, they aren't specifying parking on this application, are they?
You can, there's two parking spaces at the front, isn't it? I think we saw on the first shot.
The next one.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's, there's plenty, there's probably three spaces there. Um, Andy's got his hand up, so could we just hear what Andy's got to say?
Just wanna see, have we actually got a proper plan, do you, the main one, everything?
Um, yes, we have, which, what would you like, do you want the proposed ground floor plan?
Yeah, go on. Just give the distances between the actual property.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping for.
Well, what, what do people think we should actually propose?
There is a design and access statement as well, is there anything written in there?
A second, I'll go over that one. All right, it's 33 pages long.
Yeah.
Right, next. So you can see where there is actually, there is a vehicle on that one, just to give you a, an idea, obviously, on that.
And he's building out there, isn't he?
Yeah.
So that van will be over on the next horse.
Or, or at the front.
Well, they just wouldn't be able to park, would they, they would literally be losing any, well, even, unless the neighbour is okay for them to move up to, over their property.
That is the existing ground floor plan, existing width plan, existing elevation, I don't need to do it out with the screen.
So I think the key, the key thing that, um, is exercising everybody is the space, once the, once the renovation... once the renovations take place, is the space um to enable the access to the garage, so. And then Ben's point is that maybe even if you've got access to the garage now, you might not be able to get the car in there. Um, so, and there's three parking spaces out the front at least. What, what, what does, has anybody got an idea of what we should be proposing then? Are we going to say propose to move it or?
I, I, I would have a preference to keep access to that garage. If we do away with that access or impinge it, so it uh, it'll cause neighbour issues now and in the future, I would have thought, but I think uh the fact is, you know, it's likely to cause issues this, and I would not support this one. That door is on the side, look.
And that, actually, that view that, that you just had there, Sharon, that, that actually looks much bigger than, than the block plan, doesn't it?
I was just going to go back and see if there's anything specific.
It looks to me as if the access is almost exactly the same size as the front of the house, which is what I said earlier.
Yeah, which means that's, that's obliterating any use of the garage for, for a car.
Certainly the shape of their drive doesn't allow, look, if you build out there, doesn't allow for a lot of space, does it, to drive through?
Well, I mean, isn't that their choice, though?
Well, yeah, no, it's their planning application, Terry, but I think, you know, we have a duty to look at it in the impact that this is likely to have on the adjoining neighbours as well. Because their boundary is there, it's a shared boundary, after, after all, as well, look.
Hmm.
I wouldn't be too happy with it.
So do you want to move to um refuse it?
Yeah, I would.
Anybody want to second that?
Almost, no. Almost, not.
Refuse it, yeah, ban it, okay.
And what, what, what grounds, Andy's suggesting what grounds is that?
It, it seems to near enough remove the access to their own garage, uh, and it would impinge uh access down the sides of the shared drive there, because it would, it would mean you'd drive on that shared boundary. But with respect.
Yeah, go on.
It's their land.
Yeah.
And their access, if they choose to obstruct it, and what I'm saying is, it, it, have we got a valid planning objection?
I think it's up to transportation to look at that, to be honest.
Should that be the proposal then, that we say, could transportation have a look at this and confirm they're happy with the, well?
Their um access?
Well, I, I agree with Andy, though I just really think if it was me putting this application in, I would be saying, it's entirely up to me, if I want to use that garage as a dressing room or something, it's entirely up to me if I don't want to use it for parking anything in it.
I, I think also, Terry, with, with respect, the house has been extended, so they've got extra bedrooms, and that would come in with that, they would need extra parking. But that garage does form some of their parking allocation. But there is three spaces out from. Well, it depends if they get three in there, but um, you know, I, I would certainly look at it, the main, the main uh parking there would be considered that garage for a start, that is a, a major part of their parking. The additional space, this is extra.
If they don't want, I know, but if they don't want to use it as um parking, that's, it seems like it's up to them.
It is up to them how they use their gar, their garage, it could be turned into a utility or gym, whatever, but you, you know, it's uh, it, it's there for the purpose of putting a car in, really, but it's how they use it. But on their planning, it would have been considered as part of their parking.
So do you think the best thing to do is to suggest that the, 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 a report is, is, is um requested from the planning people, the um transport people?
Yeah, yeah, we could ask that the transport officer look at the provision of space there uh for access, regress off that site, because it would certainly impinge on the neighbour's property. And we don't know for sure whether it's that neighbour that's complaining, do we, or supported. But as Ben said, uh, sorry, as Ed said, when somebody moves, I'm sure it'll all come out there then, you know, it'll be in the deeds and why and ever, ever's helped, did anybody allow it to happen and, you know. Boundaries are a real problem, aren't they?
Okay, all right then, so, so let's just clear what, what, what's the proposal then? Is to say that um transportation would, we need to pause it to ask transportation to look at it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone got, is anyone seconding that?
Yes, I can do it.
Hang on a minute. So whatever we did last week, so that didn't work, that's gone off completely, hasn't it?
No, you're back now.
No. Yeah, but not with a video camera.
Oh.
That's turned itself off, so charging the.
It's going to turn the video.
Oh, hang on a minute.
Is it locked?
Yes, it's turned itself off.
It's not because you're sharing the screen, is it? And it might have changed the drivers to share the screen.
No, it's not, it's not, it's just come up on me now.
Uh, you're back, Sharon?
I am, but what? It'll be back in a minute. Right, right, so you were.
And the proposal was that um the application is paused, um, and still sits as a um.
Because we literally haven't got the time to comment on it. So you either have to be in favour or you have to object to it and then put a condition on about, you know, like, um, you'd object on removing the vehicle called vehicular, the application removes the vehicular access to their own garage and impinges on access to the neighbouring property and asks, they need the transport officer to do you in party provision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second that. Keith wants to do that.
Yeah, yeah, fine.
So I'll second it.
Can you take that from that, please, councillors?
We didn't pay them.
Right, from that, only the. Ed, Tom and Fab. So that's five in favour. Against. One, two against. Abstentions. One abstention. Thank you very much, that's Harry, that one.
Four abstentions.
I'll send them back. Have you given second, please, for this one? The next one. Right, the next application is.
Flips case.
Yeah, uh, P twenty-one, zero, 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 two, seven, P N H. So that's the erection, single story rear extension, which would extend beyond the rear wall of the original house by three point nine metres, for which the maximum height would be three point five metres, according to height of P fifty-two point five metres at seven foot plus.
What's a two point five?
There, three minutes.
And it is, I mean, is, is that two foot five on top of the three foot five?
Height would be ease, two point five, so yeah, if it goes out, yeah, maximum height, height would be ease of two point five, so I guess maximum height would be the height of the roof.
And I'm not an odd reason, because it would extend beyond the rear wall.
Yeah, that's, that's what we, because this would be the um, the larger home, the larger home extensions, which don't need a, a different sort of planning permission, so it is this house here. So Keith will, will confirm it's essential when you want to sort of infill it and it probably wouldn't have needed planning permission in the past. I've noticed going to the front, because it's obviously behind the back there.
Yeah.
So it is literally just in that back there.
Yeah. Can't see an issue with that one.
What does that mean about extending beyond the wall?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think me, I think what they're saying, it, it's an odd description. But I think what they're saying is it's, it's to go out beyond the, there, it's looking more.
Oh, do you see, oh, I see, so really move the wall and, yeah, oh, I see, yeah.
What I don't like is when you come out on the front of an elevation of a house, but this one's on the back, so it's not going to be seen, is it, other than by them?
It's making use of their.
It is that space, look.
Yeah.
It got really good uh utility space there, if they extend out, look.
No, it's making no difference to the next door neighbour whatsoever. Yeah.
I'll move that one.
Yeah, I think you're right, I, I'll second it.
Can you take a vote on that, please, councillors, for those in favour of that? There is in, so, oh, yeah, Ed, Tom.
It's badly worried, isn't it, of play?
Yeah, but that, that, I mean, it's weird, it's not a publication, that.
Badly worried, I think.
Right, the next one has a bit of starboard behind it, will they look me a second? Don't know whether any of you have tried to look at this online. Or whether you picked up on the very strange number of it, so it is P twenty-one, two, three, eight, five, four, P D R, which don't in mind we've got an alphabet in num, numerical order, it's bizarre to have a twenty, a twenty-one, I mean, actually, that adds twenty-three thousand, the number. Um, at erection, single story rear extension, for additional living accommodation at a hundred and twenty pounds per drive. So I did query that with the planning officer initially, just to find out the answer. And it was because it was originally booked in last year, then there was a delay for, to get some more information, then they left it at P twenty. No, they changed it to P twenty-one in error and left it along that, and so it's like twenty-three thousand ahead of forty children for the year, and that just brought us back. So then when I went on the system to try to look at the application, as of four o'clock this afternoon, all that was on there was the South Cross site plan. I emailed planning apps three times over the past week to try to get them to put the documents on, and they kept sending you a receipt on to the planning officer or the role of the page, and they've nothing done. So finally, this afternoon, I managed to get hold of someone in planning, who then spoke to someone in technical services before I passed four this afternoon, and they then managed to put something on the system. So what here is, is a bit bizarre, because actually, I couldn't even open it on the online system, but I downloaded it in the zip file, oh, I've been here for an hour, isn't it? So, I'll show you, just in case any of you would try to with it and say.
Yeah, from the portal last night.
Yeah, no, this is, but the, the, the problem is, because the numbers didn't match up from the one from last year, yeah.
Yeah.
They said technically the system should pick it up automatically, but it didn't, so it translated the documents prospect, because it had the wrong number on it. So it's this house here.
Yeah.
As I said, it was a bit of, it wasn't some huge application that was put to justify.
We, we haven't got the application name, have we?
It's related, this, this, this house owner in the corner here.
Who's Zepian?
What do you mean, um, so, who, is what you mean, who the application book is?
Yeah, I mean, only insofar as this one rings a bell, and I got a feeling that it may have been an officer's application when it came in.
I, I have tried this, I mean, it opened before, so I'm hoping it, it, yeah, but it's literally has all, it's coming in slow, I'm just trying to be. No, it's from this Richmond.
It's gone, oh, it's gone on the screen.
Yeah, it's gone.
It's gone on the screen.
Right, yeah, Richmond.
Right.
I managed to only walk it. So that's what's there at the moment, and that's what's proposed.
And they've got permitted development anyway, so, which is odd. Most of it's been taken away in Bravingstone, but. Where does this really got permitted development? On the application. Isn't it a P D R? Oh, no, sorry, P N H.
No, I, I think.
Oh, yeah, permitted development, it's the um campaign, isn't it?
Yeah.
They, they give them P D R on the, on the numbers, even if they've got the development rights removed, they're still called P D R. Yeah, but it, it clarifies that it's a per, permitted development application. Or would have been if the rights hadn't been removed. Yeah. I can't see an issue here with this one, to be honest.
No, because it's, it's doing nothing, it's not impacting anybody else, it's just helping them.
Yeah. I move it, I second that, Keithy?
Yeah.
Very pleased, thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Keith, on the second name. My, 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 my. Three, four, five. Yeah, it's unanimous, thank you very much.
There can't be a house in the crannies that hasn't been extended, I'm sure.
No.
I'm thinking that.
I always think that's a very strange word, man, I promise.
Yeah.
Right, so the next one is. So P twenty-one, zero, 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 one, nine, two, F. Erection, single story rear extension, for additional living accommodation at thirty-two foot plus. It is, oh. It's this house here.
Ooh. Yeah.
Absolutely. Bone plant. So that's what's there at the moment, and that's what we want to do, that broads.
Good idea.
Yeah, move it.
Yeah. I think we should do that, exactly that, so, I'm happy to second it.
Take a vote on that, please councillor, bring a paper, that one. Tom.
I'm good at them.
One, two, three, four. Seven favour, again. Extension. Like, that's all, three.
Is that a Keith?
No, Tom, Tom's disappeared.
I'm trying to get my, I'm trying to get my thunder disappearing.
I was thinking, that'd be such lovely, just, where is it?
Oh, God, it's gone the other way now. Come on.
Sometimes the more you try to do it, the more you end up with it, it keeps coming up then. So the le- the last one is, um, a reconsideration, so it's P twenty, two, two, five, eight, nine, F. The erection, two-story height extension, form additional living accommodation at thirty-three, eight, close. So you had this back in, um, November and council had no objection to it. They've now resubmitted and it's slightly reduced on the side. One minute, not coming out quite so far at the front, but we were.
We, we, we approved it the last time.
Yeah, I mean, I had no objection to that, but they're reconsulted because it is smaller, yeah.
Interesting. We'll repeat it then, then.
Right, so it's this house, if you remember, it's past the time back, it's up in the corner, it's squeezed in. Um. Yeah, so this one, there, that one in the corner there. So, um, sustainable transport wanted more information about the, um, the parking provision, which they have provided, so the amended one is the proposed block plan. Which is that.
Sorry, was that, Tom, were you trying to say something there?
That shows the, they've got their garage and then the parking space, lots of that. Off there. So that's the proposed block plan, and the proposed application, so they show you what, what the plan has been superpeded, so we. So this is what they were aiming to do, which council have a problem with. And this is what they're doing now, so they shrunk that and not going out as long.
Yeah, move it.
P?
Yeah, move it.
Maybe one second?
Andy? Uh, five, put your hand up to second.
No, okay.
Can you take a vote on that, please councillor, in favour?
Yeah, uh, yeah, more choice.
Stick in favour?
We'd like it, we'd like it.
Again?
Yeah, take it.
Upstream.
Five, four, one, again, one, you said, thank you very much, councillors.
Okay, thank you for that, Sharon.
Karen, three. Um, I'll do.
Okay, moving on to point nine, to deal with matters referring to work within the scope of the Planning and Environment Committee, not covered elsewhere. Nine point one, S G C, Chris Patchway Metro project, metro bus extension, juicy patch lane, stakeholder liaison group, up dent.
And you had the, um, update in your agenda pack. And then there was a meeting on Monday, and as, as, like you said, they have, um, started to remove the trees of this patch lane. Now removing trees. We, we had, you see in your update, you've got in your pack, you did actually have a response from, uh, Network Rail with, with our planning, um.
Yeah, I read it, it's. You know, basically, you're going to do it anyway.
Well, they're going to do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
There was quite a bit that came out of that meeting yesterday, Sharon.
Yeah.
The trees, uh, actually were being felled as we, as we went to the meeting anyway. So that was going ahead, but apparently they've had to put a stop on some because they've, uh, got to check the B T wires under the ground.
All right.
If you recall, they did a lot of this.
No, they, they, yeah, they, they did a lot of utility drainage, did they, last quarter, was it?
And now they've found, uh, stuff that means the trees, uh, can't be felled. So there's a stop on them. Uh, there were also some comments made that they're going to go ahead and put some bus stops in, uh, which are very close to the junction as you go into Bush Avenue. And what it means is, while they're programming that work in, they're, they, they can't have any traffic used, uh, in that. So it's now got to be diverted up to the Stone Lane. So there's got to be a diversion of traffic, buses, et cetera, going up to the Stone Lane, through King's Way, coming back down onto Getford Crescent. Uh, there's also some doubt on the camber of the road, although they think they've got it right. I think to get the thought, they're going to have to go back considerably more than what they're saying that they intend to. But that will all have to be looked at again. Um, meanwhile, we have a C E F meeting on first, uh, February. And we have one of the officers coming along. And Owen might be in his shoes, or all the team, so you are. Uh, he's going to have to contend with residents on this one, and there's a fair few people that are not very happy. Uh, as you saw yesterday, Sharon, at the meeting.
Yeah, definitely.
And as you know, Tony, uh, for just reasons, some of the residents are really, well, they, they had to put up with a hell of a lot. And they're going to have to put up with a hell of a lot went forward as well, because the bridge is not particularly attractive. Uh, whether they'll get compensation, officers have implied that they could be eligible for double blazing, I think it would be more like triple blazing. Uh, and some compensation, but they very quickly say, well, of course, that's not the remit of this particular committee. So I pushed yesterday for the, uh, residents to be given the contact details of the officers specifically, but they've got to liaise with for the compensation. Don't wait until it's all done and dusted, and then somebody turn around and say, well, you know, we've never really committed to giving you compensation. If there's going to be any question of it, then put her in touch with the people now. Let's have some news.
Okay, thank you for that.
All right.
Um. The next point is point ten, to deal with matters relating to health and safety, as we still unknown.
Okay, love.
And the, um, final point, which, which is eleven, to confirm the date and the time of the next meeting, which is Wednesday, the twenty-fourth of February, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M. And hopefully we'll be all out of lockdown by then. Or not.
Have you, no.
Yeah.
You used eighth of March now, isn't it?
Yeah, the schools won't be going back until, is it, at least eighth March, isn't it, then?
In the next six weeks.
Yeah.
I have to call you mystic, mystic Terry on tape, man, all that.
I must say that I've, um, cancelled my T V licence, so I don't look at the, I don't look at the T V anymore. I'm sick and tired of all the, uh, of all the ludicrously biased, um, reporting, so, um, so I've cancelled it.
You're not, that's.
So, you know, I believe. Okay, all right. Sorry, Sharon?
I was just in place, good night, if you have any place to meet you now?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, but you've suddenly gone, um, a little bit sort of vibrating for some reason, but anyway. We're closing now anyway, aren't we, if everyone's happy, so, um.
Good night all, good night.
Good night, see you soon, bye.
Thanks, darling, bye, Andy.